Don't go anywhere.
Wasn't planning on it.
Item 6.4, our 9:10 a.m. item. Consideration of report to the board of the current status of the Canacti Gardens project and the special district sewer improvement project on Alveda Avenue in Clear Lake to mitigate the development impacts. Director Harder.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Briefly, the Canacti Gardens project, it's a 102-unit multifamily apartment complex off of Old Highway 53 down in Clear Lake. The project's been underway for a few years now. I dug up some emails going back to 2020 on that as well. They were working through the construction. From the onset, we had advised them of what some of the requirements were. They were required to do a hydraulic capacity analysis to determine the project's impact on our sewer system. They were required to pay capacity expansion fees based on the size of the project and the number of units. And then there was a requirement that the onsite improvements be in conformance with our standards. We inspect them, and prior to allowing connection to the sewer system, they would have to be inspected and approved. Broad brushstrokes, but those are kind of the three key points on most developments as they happen. Those are the three concerns that we usually have for larger developments. Early on in the process, going back as far as June 2020, we began communication with their project lead. Our staff advised them right up front of those requirements, including the hydraulic capacity analysis. That was relayed back and forth through their civil engineer. We provided the contact information for the firm that has our sewer model in their system and does those hydraulic analysis, speaking with my contact up there, Michael Randall at Jacobs Engineering. The developer's engineer and developer staff reached out early on in the process, was provided a quote to do that capacity analysis, but for whatever reason, it wasn't performed. Periodically through the project, as we'd check in with the developer, we'd remind them of what things were still outstanding prior to occupancy as we were getting closer and closer. It finally came to a head last fall. They were wanting to know what things were still outstanding. Well, those three things were still outstanding. They hadn't paid their capacity fees, they hadn't completed the capacity analysis study, and we hadn't inspected the improvements. December of last year, I went ahead and just initiated the capacity analysis study with Jacobs Engineering on our behalf, advising them that they could reimburse me for it, but we needed to get that process going to understand what potential impact there might be. Draft results from that study were available at the end of January, and there was a fairly significant impact from the project to our collection system downstream. The mitigation proposed is an upsizing of about 2,200 feet of sewer main on Alveda Avenue. It's currently undersized. During wet weather conditions, the project, any increase from the project would cause our sewer system to surcharge and spill, not acceptable. Dry weather flows, their project still causes the system to exceed capacity in that region. However, our standard for capacity of the pipe during summer flows is 50% full, so it wouldn't cause it to spill, but it would exceed our design standards. Been in contact with the developer since those came back, those results came back, and we're working towards a design and construction of those improvements before they can connect. The design engineer's recommendation, or the capacity analysis engineer's recommendation, was that they can't connect until those improvements are done. It would result in a sewer spill, and you know, that's not good for us, not good for the regulatory agencies, not good for the community. So there's a clause within our consultant selection procedures which allows us to directly negotiate with a consultant if it's a continuation of work already done. Jacobs Engineering has our hydraulic model in their system. They've already done that work that is kind of germane and pertinent to the design of those improvements and sizing the pipes. So I'm working with county council. We're going back and forth on a couple of items with Jacobs Engineering to get the design contract in place for that construction project to do those improvements to that 2,200 feet of sewer main. That project's timeline looks like construction this summer, hopefully completing by October, maybe early November. It's pushing it pretty tight to get it done this season, but that's the timeline we're looking at, is to hopefully have those improvements done so that then the Canacti Gardens project can successfully connect to the collection system. They have paid their capacity fees, they paid those a couple of months ago, so that item has been checked off. They've been working over the last, I'd say, six weeks probably with our staff and their general contractor. We've been doing the onsite inspections. We're at the tail end of that. It passed the mandrel test, so the pipe's in good condition, passed pressure tests and leak tests so that we know that's in good shape. We have yet to receive the video, we're going to get that today, and then we're going to review that. So that'll provide us information on whether or not there's any bellies in the pipe or defects in that regard. So we're close to having our inspection of the facilities completed, and we're looking at getting the mitigation project underway.
Cap? Thank you very much for the presentation. Any comments or questions? So I have a couple of questions. You spoke about using Jacobs Engineering for the design process. What's post-design process? Is that same emergency ability to use the same company that did the study? Can that similarly be used for the construction? Or does the construction have to go out for RFP? What's that process once the design is done? To kind of better understand what that timeline is.
The construction has to go out to bid. We're anticipating it's going to cost about $300,000. So within the purchasing policy, there is the ability for the public works department, public services department, or special districts department. We can negotiate a contract for construction work at force account, so we can negotiate directly with a contractor up to $60,000. We can proceed in an informal bid process up to $200,000. So if we anticipate it's going to be less than $200,000, there's a less formal process where we can contact, we can advertise, and we can work with known bidders. And it can still be signed off by the director of one of those three given departments. So it's a little less formal. But with this project anticipated to cost over $300,000, it's going to be a formal bid process. So we will advertise for bids, minimum of 15 days. Hopefully, we get multiple bids back. We'll open sealed bids, read those aloud, and then go through the award process, bring it to the board for award.
Okay. And so even with that, within the timeline, you still feel that by end of October, possibly early November, is a possibility? Or is that already a difficult timeline to keep?
Yes.
If it's past November and it's the wet season, are you able to continue that type of construction where you can finish at a later time? And at that point, the infrastructure would be set and ready and prepared for the capacity needs of the apartment complex? And so then they can open? Or at that point, if you're past November and it's in the wet season, I know construction doesn't always typically happen around that time, are you going to have to wait till the following year?
Most likely not. Utility construction is a little more forgiving in the wintertime. Paving, road restoration, that sort of stuff, we definitely need the dry weather, and we need to do that. But with utility construction, it's a little more forgiving. There's also some alternative methods that we could consider which may expedite things, may address some concerns with open trench cut type construction. Pipe bursting is one option. So they would actually, contractor sets up over two manholes. They attach a mandrel, which is larger than the existing pipe size, but which enlarges the space around it big enough for the new pipe, and then they pull in the new pipe. So it's typically a flexible, high-density polyethylene pipe, and so they drag that through, and so they winch that through. That's pretty non-evasive, and that can continue throughout the wet season.
Okay. You mentioned that one of the checkboxes left was the, doing the video of the pipe. Is that within the project space itself, or is that in connection to the system on the street level?
It's within the project space, and they've done the video. They're just, we're getting a flash drive of that today. It's actually three flash drives. So that's the last outstanding item, is reviewing that video.
So obviously crossing fingers that everything checks out when you review that video, that there's not additional things that need to occur.
And we're pretty confident that'll be the case, unless there's significant bellies. The fact that it passed the mandrel test, so what that is, is we pull a piece of equipment which is sized to the inside diameter of the pipe through all the pipes, so the contractor does. That verifies that there's no misalignments, that the pipes are lined up properly, that they're not crushed or collapsed. That passed successfully for all the onsite work. Additionally, it also passed the leak and pressure test. So we're pretty certain that the onsite stuff is in good shape, it's just that's the last step, is reviewing the video.
Okay. And then, since you're linking down to the Alveda area, which is not next to the project itself, it's further on west, I guess, is the right direction. That's connecting over to pump station two, which then sends it to pump station one. Are those set to go? It's only that 2,200 feet that are necessary to fix. Everything else within the system is capable of handling the additional capacity.
Yeah, there will be some additional, increased runtimes for those lift stations, but nothing that requires mitigation at this point in time.
Okay. And there is one thing that I would like to see happen here, is I know that you and I spoke back and forth on a couple of different emails, and you were talking about, once you have a project, that at that point, you would approach the city. I would like to ask that, and if I can get consensus from the board, that a meeting between special districts, the city, and the developers, just because it is an overall project within the city. I think the timeline, it was not the expected timeline at this point in time, that it's being extended potentially through October to early November. And I just think having those conversations to better understand the status and to continue to be up to date on what is happening or what is not happening would, I think, be beneficial for all parties involved rather than not knowing the exact details. So that's what I would request, if there's an approval from the board, to say, please make sure to sit down and have those conversations rather than waiting till the design is done and everything else, because there is another project that is already happening, and this is kind of ancillary to that project, not its own, special project on its own.
Yeah. Certainly wasn't going to wait until the design was done. I was waiting until we had the design contract in place, because that, from there forward, is a pretty known timeline. We're still working through the details. So once we've got something signed and we've got an agreement, then we can kind of say, okay, here's where we are in the timeline. But between our legal and their legal, we're still kind of going back on some of the terms. But yeah, definitely intend to sit down and, yeah.
And if I'm correct, the developers were anticipating to potentially move in sometime in April or May? Is that correct? That was their original intent?
Their original intent, I believe, was mid-April, May, yeah.
Okay, okay. At this moment in time, if there's no further comments or questions, I'm going to open it up for public comment, questions, and I'll, anybody with a hand raised in Zoom. I have, let's go ahead and start on Zoom. I have Kiana Amiri-Divani.
Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors. My name is Kiana Amiri-Divani. I'm with Myers-Navee, speaking on behalf of our client, CRP Affordable Housing and Community Development. We appreciate your time and consideration of this report. However, some of this information is new regarding the hydraulic capacity analysis to be conducted by the developer. You know, as Mr. Harder was indicating, that conversations have been going back since 2020. However, at no point was it indicated that this hydraulic capacity analysis would be the responsibility of the developer. We're checking on that, and you know, in terms of the last recent six weeks, we've had communications with Mr. Harder, and it wasn't communicated to our client. And we are worried about this impact on the need for occupying the housing project. Obviously, as many of you are aware, affordable housing is a huge problem in the state of California, and to delay this project would be to delay occupancy for hundreds of families in the community who are in need. So we respectfully ask that the board not take any action on this consideration item and have, you know, further conversations with Mr. Harder and his team to discuss what the feasibility would be to potentially connect the project and have occupancy starting in April or May, because it would be due during the dry season, which would not have a huge impact or any impact of connecting in until the wet season. And by the wet season, hopefully, the mitigation project will have been completed.
Thank you very much for your comments. We have Brian Chuisano. Apologize if I mispronounced that.
Thank you so much. This is Brian Chuisano from CRP Affordable Housing and Community Development. Yeah, I think that we would like to take you up, Mr. Supervisor, on your suggestion of a meeting with the developer and with the city and with special districts in order to further discuss this. As our council has stated, there is an extreme need for us to get the property online in April and May. As we discussed with Mr. Harder in previous conversations over the last few weeks, you know, this is an existential threat to our project, and a delay through to October, November is just absolutely not sustainable, and will financially take a wrecking ball to what is there right now. So I think it's very important that we streamline that conversation. We have over 1,000 applications for those 102 units, so there is a dire need in the area, and we'd like to be part of filling that, and we just hope that we can have a quick conversation with all the interested parties and try and move to a beneficial resolution for both the city, the county, and special districts, and the integrity of the sewer system. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. And if you made a comment and didn't want to make another comment, please put your hand down. If your hand is still up and you've already spoken, I'll get back to you after I go through the chamber first. Is there anybody in the chamber that wishes to speak?
Morning, Chair, Sabatia, Board members. So as Mr. Harder mentioned, this project started initially in May of 2020. We did initial site plan review in early 2021. Special districts issued a conditional will-serve letter in March of 2021. And I want to go through some things, because there's some facts that the board needs to know that haven't been shared with you today. Special districts did issue a deferral of the capacity expansion fees until the certificate of occupancy was issued, and that happened back in August of 2021. The civil improvement plans were signed by the city, the water district, the fire district, and special districts in June of 2022. And really, at that time, there were three sort of important improvements that were needed for the project. There were some fairly significant upgrades to Highland's waters system, primarily for fire flow, to meet fire flow standards. There were some traffic impacts that needed to be mitigated. And as was mentioned previously, there was the possibility of issues in the sewer system that can only be defined by the capacity expansion, or the capacity analysis that was mentioned. And so all of those have been resolved, except for the sewer system. Late last year, there was a discussion of what it would take to get the certificate of occupancy initiated by the developer. And special districts listed the three things that Mr. Harder mentioned earlier. And I quote, though, "First and foremost was payment of the expansion fees, which totaled over $1 million," which were paid. And then again, just to refresh, besides that, the capacity analysis being complete, and then inspection and testing of the system. So as I understand it, the capacity analysis has been placed, the responsibility has been placed on the developer by special districts. But I think it's important to understand that in order to complete that analysis, special districts has to provide information to the developer's engineer, the sewer model, in order to complete that. And so ultimately, special districts ended up contracting with Jacobs Engineering to complete the analysis on behalf of the developer. So what are the results? A portion of line along Alveda, it was determined would exceed 50% capacity in the dry season. But that's not the whole story. The report also says that that happens right now. Existing conditions caused that to happen. And the additional impact of this project on that section of pipe is 4.4%. The project, or the analysis specifically says, we could quote from it if you would like, I would encourage you to get a copy of it and look at it. It also says that this portion of the system is overcapacity with or without the project. And, you know, to paraphrase another section for existing conditions related to wet weather analysis, "Giving these vulnerable conditions in the existing system, we recommend improving this pipe with or without this project." So we have a problem in the system. There wasn't enough leadership to get this analysis done in a timely manner like the other impacts of the project so that they could be resolved. I'm not specifically pointing fingers on who should have done that, but it should have been done. And here we are, less than 30 days from potential occupancy of 52 units. All 102 units are on track to be occupied sometime in May. This development has, developer's been given assurances that this was not an issue as long as special districts can complete the project in October and pay a portion of the cost, which they've agreed to do. But today, we have a little different story, and we have a $40 million investment in our community that hinges on this sort of new information, and it's impacting, as was mentioned, hundreds of low-income residents. I think special districts and the Board of Supervisors need to figure out a way to provide occupancy to this project as was expected and move heaven and earth to get this project done. And I do want to mention, there hasn't been communications with the city about this, but this pipe lies underneath a road that was recently repaved by the city, and per our municipal code, special districts is going to have to completely replace that road edge to edge, which is going to significantly increase the cost of the project beyond $300,000 to $400,000. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone else in the room have a comment? And I see no further hands up in Zoom as well. Oh, please, come on up. Joan, you don't need to wait for me to call on you. Thank you.
Joan Mas, I am asking you why this gentleman who represents the legal interests of the city wasn't at the table with you, and why he was given more than three minutes. Thank you. I think you did a very good job and mentioned some very important things. I think you should have been up there with you, so if more than three minutes would have been okay.
Thank you for your comments, Joan. This is not the City of Clear Lake's presentation, so I wanted to make sure that those at the seats were those that were doing the presentation. I did not have a timer on me, and in fact, if it was a fire district, or the City of Clear Lake, or the City of Lakeport, and it's a project that impacts them, I would definitely want to give them the time to be able to express themselves. It's been done before in the past, and I think that we should provide that respect to those agencies as well. There's no further comments. Bring it back to the board. As I stated, I think that we need to see the three entities sit down and discuss it. I hear the city manager's request, and I just, I think it's a rock and a hard place. Connecting creates a whole different situation that we've unfortunately seen multiple times in the past with the atmospheric rivers that have come through. There's more rain coming in again this weekend, not a torrential amount of rain, but to be able to predict the weather throughout the rest of spring, throughout summer, and who knows if it's earlier than October, that it might even come up. It just creates another incident, another issue that does not need to happen. Again, I don't have an answer on how it is that we can make things more correct. Obviously, the timelines didn't all match, and I don't know where the ball was dropped specifically. I couldn't tell you whether that's the developer, the special districts, or the city. I do not know. I know it makes it difficult when there's that many different partners playing together. But also, I think the new state laws don't necessarily help in the sense that they are pushing to streamline these things where they don't have to go through the process in the same way as others would have had to go through. And I think we need to, I know that Director Harder and I talked about it, you spoke to me about a new potential way to ensure that people can find out if permits have been approved or have been set for that. And to me, it's more of a, how do we make sure this doesn't happen in the future so we can be more efficient in how we go through these projects? And if the conversation between the three, the city, the developer, and special districts can find a way that doesn't place more, I don't want to say harm, but potential issues in the way of that area, then I'd love for that to come back to us to see if that's something that we can continue to discuss with. At this moment in time, that's, those are my comments. Supervisor Green.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for bringing this item and what I see in front of me, and then I'm getting some backstory here, and it's interesting. I agree. Affordable housing projects, for better or worse, this was pitched ministerially, it's exempt from CEQA. I think an initial study that would have captured all this and pointed out a roadmap for the various parties to come together on what it's going to take to get this across the finish line probably would have been beneficial, because when we just say it's all ministerial and we'll figure this stuff out on the fly, you know, most of the developers in the affordable housing space are on these razor-thin margins. And so this, I can understand the concerns that have been stated here, both by the developer and the city. And, you know, I don't think the CEQA exemption worked to anyone's benefit in this particular case. If I understood the ask correctly, and I don't know if it's going to come back to us in a more formal manner, it's, what can we do to get an occupancy letter while we figure out how to expand the system? And so the initial request, meet and confer and try to figure that out, I think is appropriate. But I think it's also appropriate to say, I don't know what the technical aspects would be of allowing them to proceed with at least partial occupancy of the complex while we figure out how to expand it to its ultimate thing. That seems to be what they're asking for. So I'd be interested to hear how that discussion goes.
Any other comments?
So there was some public comment here today in the room, and Scott, I just don't know if you want to respond to any of those comments that were made about timing, information, or anything. I saw you shaking your head on a couple of comments, so I just want to make sure that we talk through this process. As far as mitigating preconstruction and other things, having the city of its project in the city, I absolutely think they need to be at table to talk about these things. But in the information provided today, from day one on the permits that were given, this was a potential to happen, so.
Yes.
It was on there as one, two, and three.
It was made very clear.
So as a developer, you're always looking at worst-case scenarios, I would think of, well, these are potential projects that I may have to really pay attention to, especially with the sewer hookups, because if we have a spill in Clear Lake, the first people are going to be here are the leaders in Clear Lake saying, why is there a spill in my city? So understanding that process and understanding it's really important.
Yeah, yes. The hydraulic capacity analysis, it was good to have Brian actually on Zoom, because Brian was the contact, between him and Ron Conway, the civil engineer for the project, that we had those initial discussions with. And we've got emails between my staff and Brian and Ron indicating that the capacity analysis is required, this is who you need to contact, this is who does it for us. And it's not that the developer needed information from us. Actually, we need information from the developer, or what we do is we put them directly in contact with the consultant who does that hydraulic analysis. So Ron Conway, the civil engineer for the project, gets in contact with Michael Randall, Jacobs Engineering provides the information that Michael Randall needs. They put that into the hydraulic analysis model that they have of our system, and then they identify what the potential impacts are going to be. So that was made very clear from, you know, June of 2020, that that was the process that was going to be required. Like I said, I don't know why it wasn't followed through with. I do know in speaking with Michael Randall that the developer did contact them, they did get a quote for doing the work, never greenlit the agreement, they never proceeded with it past that point. Why, I do not know.
There are other projects, obviously, happening in the City of Clear Lake, typically trying to move forward.
Correct.
And we'll be, so making sure that communication. So I'm in support of those pre-construction. So I'm in support of those pre-construction meetings happening with the City of Clear Lake to talk through these issues with all departments, because as we know, we had a developer in here not long ago, Canocti Red Hills Road, conversation about improving the roadway was a big conversation, so, all right.
Yeah, and Burns Valley Project, another apartment complex down there. Very successful project. We worked very well with the developer. Same situation, same information was provided upfront. That process went very smoothly.
And appreciate the question. Thank you for asking that. I'm looking forward. I don't want to look backwards. I want to make sure that we don't have a situation again in the future where we have almost fully built homes that cannot be occupied because of something that was missed, no matter who it is that may have missed it, just for the fact that we want to create something that can be utilized and benefits the community. This has some negatives that come along with it. And so I want to figure out, how do we solve this? How can we shrink the timeline? How can we help you get over? That's why I was asking, can we use the same emergency processes? I know that we do have certain emergency powers, not sure if we can use it for this, but anything that we can do to hurry the process. I don't want to solve one problem to create another, but I definitely want to help solve this problem and make sure that we also find a new enhanced way to not get into the same position again. And so I want to keep pushing forward. This is not, this is a frustrating situation, but again, looking forward, not pointing any fingers at any speci, I don't have enough information, but please keep us posted and let us know, because if there's anything that the board can do to help facilitate expediting the process, then I would say approach the board.
Okay, yeah, no, appreciate that. We're doing the same. We're looking to see how we can expedite this, make this construction project happen as efficiently and quickly as possible, get them occupancy in a way that doesn't put the county liability and risk for potential spills. That's a big concern. And then, like we discussed earlier, we're already implementing policies. We're using this as a learning. We're setting certain things in place that this should not happen again.
Absolutely. There's nothing further from the board? And thank you very much, and keep us posted.
All right, thank you.